Planning board for the town of Pompey would like to call tonight's meeting to order for August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. First announcement that this meeting is being held via Zoom. It's being recorded and livestreamed via Facebook in accordance with Governor Cuomo's executive order number two zero two dot one. First, the agenda with that is I'd like with last month's meeting minutes of July twenty, if there are any corrections, otherwise a motion, excuse me, to accept them as presented.
I move to accept the minutes.
In motion by Roy. I'll second it. Kevin, you're on mute. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I only want others. So Kevin, you're still muted on your microphone. Kevin, your microphone off.
Well, I'm really enjoying.
There it goes.
Okay, there we go. All right, and Carl, you with us?
Yep, I'm with you.
Okay, and Dan?
I am here.
Okay, everybody's in favor?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries on the minutes. I guess we're gonna take a step back real quick here and to go around, I guess, do a roll call of who is here first. Myself, Sue Smith with a chair, looking at different, well, you just moved on me. Okay. When I call your name, get away, you got Roy Smith. Okay, Kevin? Kevin Corson, Kevin Lynch? Not going to, okay. John Shaheen, are you on yet?
I am.
Okay, we have John with us now. Carl?
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
And as far as planning board members, did I miss any of them? I think we're all good. Board secretary, okay, Bob Rodriguez codes. Jamie, our prestigious lawyer representative. Let's see, Dan, Steve Snell, our town engineer. Okay, from town wise, oh, thank you to Veronica for coordinating the Zoom.
You're welcome.
And after that, I do see Mr. Cody is on and we'll we'll get to him in a minute. And a little bit of side business detail. Planning board, I know before all this COVID stuff hit, there was a handful of us that did go to the county's planning symposium. Hopefully, everybody has submitted in their training log that they gave us. For those that didn't go, I do remind you that it is an annual prerequisite that you do complete some training. There are courses online that you can take and turn in those certificates. If you need to reach out to me, I got a couple websites that you can visit. There was an email sent out that the county has already canceled next spring's symposium. And they're, they are talking about possibly doing some online training, and I know that it's been bantered about a little bit with Jamie and Tim about possibly coming up with something that would be appropriate and pertain more to us in Pompey and doing a little bit of training. So that's kind of in the mill and we'll go from there with that for two thousand and twenty one. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, silence is golden then. Okay, with that, on the agenda tonight, we do have a preliminary review of a two lot subdivision. Applicant is Richard Cody and Lisa Cody, and it's also known as Spring Hill Farm, located at twenty nine sixty four Pompey Hollow Road. And the parcel number is zero two four dot dash zero four dash zero five dot two. This one has posed some challenges, trying to work between two counties and two townships. It sits right on the Madison Anadaga County line and thus affecting the townships of Pompey and Casanova. Been a little bit discussion of back and forth, back and forth. This, as it stands, as it is right now, it will need to go to the ZBA for variance. Lot size, lot setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess maybe from here, if we start with Mr. Cody, you can give us a little synopsis what you're trying to do, and then after that, I guess I will look to Jamie and Bob for more input and insight to bring everybody up to speed what we're looking at here.
Can we pull the plan, Sue?
Oh, yes, Veronica, can you put up the tax parcel? The sketch there? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cody, go ahead.
Okay, hey, thanks, everybody. I appreciate your time tonight. We've, this is, this has been an interesting ordeal, I guess I would call it, just because when we first purchased the property, knowing that it had both, both Madison County and Anadaga County property lines that if we were, the, our original plan was to, you know, develop the property. And currently, we're operating the house, the hay barn, a chicken coop, and a garage as a bed and breakfast. And our plan was to and still is to, to take the barn on the northern, on the northern property that's in Anadaga County and build it into a single family residence. And the issue being is that obviously you can't have two single family residences on one piece of property. Maybe by the fact that we're, the, the entire lot as it exists currently is in both Madison and Anadaga County. So we, we looked at this a number of different ways and how we could, you know, how we could do it. And I definitely, Jamie was really helpful when I went to her and explained the situation because she was really the first person to kind of understand what we were trying to do. Gary Cottrell, who did the drawings, had a number of ideas about it, but, but Jamie was the one that kind of said, well, look, if you're gonna do this, this is how, this is how it needs to go. So I do appreciate all the time that she took with me looking into this. So a- as it stands right now, the, and I'm gonna look up, because I can see this better up on my map. The northern lot, lot one, that's referred to lot one, would only be one point four one acres, which would need an area variance where it to be granted into a single, a single lot. Now, if you add that to the Casanova lot that it would be a part of in Madison County, you're, you're looking at a lot that's, that's close to five acres, okay? The southern lot, lot two, is only, is one point three. And the northern lot, as the line was drawn by Gary to split the, to split the property, would end up being just a little bit short of two acres, okay? So the, the, when we go to the ZBA, we're going to need a number of variances from the town zoning board because we need to have two acres per lot, as you probably are all aware. And that, that's nonconforming. So what we want to try to do is split these lots and get the variances that are going to be created by thus. Also, we're gonna need variances granted for the distance of the current properties. As they, as this, as these two lots are created, there's some issues as far as the, as distance variances. And I'm just gonna start, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go north to south. The first issue that we have is on the north variance that'll be needed is on the, the distance from west to east is only a hundred and ninety five feet, the depth of the property, and that needs to be over two hundred. Okay, that, that, that northern boundary. The second, the, the second variance that we would need, as I spoke with Jamie, as it stands right now, the barn itself is not fifty feet from the road. It's forty, it's a little less than forty nine in one place, or a little less than fifty and forty eight. Now, that barn, were we to reclaim it, would not be in that position. It would probably be right above where it sits right now by maybe ten to fifteen feet. So that would not, in fact, need any type of variance from the road. And we don't plan to, but we, we, the, the deterioration of the barn to reclaim it, we're gonna have to put, take it apart and put it back together, and we're not gonna do it that close to the road. We wouldn't want to create the need for a variance there. The second variant, so, so there's the, so the first variance is that northern line, the second variance is the actual lot size, which is one point four acres. Then we get down into lot number two, that's the third variance that's gonna be needed because the size of the lot in the town of Pompey is one point three acres. And in addition to that, we didn't, I didn't, I, we didn't, we weren't aware of this when we bought the house, but the, the, the house, the farmhouse, as it's been, and on top of it, we've re, we've redeveloped that farmhouse and redone it. The, that lot, that's gonna need a variance of thirty three feet from the, because that's from the road, thirty three feet from the road. And then the last variance, and I might, if, if there are more, Jamie, let me know, but the last variance is gonna be, one of the barns is only thirty nine feet from the line off of Route twenty. And that's also gonna need a variance. So there are five variances altogether to be granted on this. Did I explain that so it makes sense?
Yes, the only one I, I don't recall the variance on the, on the line where it's only one ninety six. I don't think that that's a variance that was required.
I thought, I, I wasn't, okay.
Yeah, I think we were mixing some apples and oranges there, it, because we were doing dimensions to figure out how big the lot was. So it's not the line, there isn't a variance that's per se needed on the line, it had to do.
Oh, that's good. So there are only four then? So but the barn, just, just so you know, the property, we've redeveloped this property. The barns were, when we, when we purchased this in the fall of October two thousand and seventeen, the barns were in terrible disrepair. We've rehabbed one of the hay barns completely. And our, our next job is the chicken coop, we've painted all the barns, put new, basically gutted the inside of the farmhouse. As I said, right now, it's being operated as a B and B. And we just, we would like to continue to develop that, that, that little business that we have there. And, you know, at some point in time, if we can, if this can, if this can be built, you know, do a small amount of farming, things like that around the, on, on the property.
If I can just kind of chime in on, on where this, this has been and how we came up with what this is. So this is unusual because, and this isn't the first time anyone has come to me saying, hey, we can, can we combine these lot lines in different towns? And the answer is no, every municipality has their own rules. The fact that the lots are contiguous like that may have an influence on the ZBA because they may be like, hey, we're perfectly fine with the smaller lots because really it acts like, you know, one, it acts like the same lot. And whether the ZBA puts some kind of stipulation on it, saying if the, you know, Casanova lot is ever developed, you know, then, or you can't develop it or whatever, I don't know if they'll care. Because the CAS lots each have road frontage. I don't know if that triangular lot is, would be conforming though, but it does have both of them.
I don't think, I don't think it is as a.
Probably wouldn't be anyway, but it, that one, the one has quite a bit of road frontages, they both do. They on lot two, the, the barn in the house, that's an existing condition. But the reason it now needs a variance is because you're increasing a nonconformity by dividing the lot. It's like, it was okay the way it was and we live with it, but once you make the lot smaller or do other things to it, you need to go and get that variance because, because you're not permitted to increase a nonconformity, which is also the issue with respect to the, that side yard setback. So that, that's all. I mean, I had worked with Mr. Cody and Gary Cottrell to make sure that we had all the right measurements and so forth, which we now do. We can't act until the ZBA does. So that's, that's my input on that.
I have a question, Jamie, with, and I love the property, I'm right up the hill from it, it's a beautiful piece of property. Is why are we looking at it now with all of the action that's required by the ZBA?
Jamie, you're muted.
I, I, I wasn't looking at myself, I was looking at Kevin because I can only see so many people. Sorry, didn't realize I was muted. We could, we could call for the public hearing that's required on subdivision pending hearing from ZBA. So that would keep it out of that situation that we had with, with our last one, the Canary, which is waiting another month for that to come back and then another month to have the, the hearing. So we could set it up, and if the ZBA acts positively, we can move forward with our public hearing. So that's why we would have it on tonight.
I, I have another question that, on the application, they talk about total acreage to be physically disturbed is three point two five. Is, is that, are they're actually gonna disturb the property or is it all dependent on what the ZBA says and what they do?
I, I, I think that that should probably be changed because the, in the subdivision, they're not disturbing anything. Later, when they do something to the property, there'll be some disturbance, but that's a whole separate permitting process with Bob Rodriguez. And it's, it's not commercial, so it's not gonna come to us, it's residential.
Jamie, this is John Shaheen. Is a B and B a permitted use?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Actually, it is. I've, I've, I've looked the code, the codes in the town of Pompey, it is, it's a permitted, it's a permitted use in the, in the the way the lot is currently zoned and agricultural.
Is it falling under home occupation?
Yeah, I, you know what, and I have the, it's, oh, sixty five dash nine zone district, and it has the, the findings and purposes of the town, and it lists the applicability and all the, you know, the, the, the accessory uses and all the things that go on, go along with the overlay district. And a bed and breakfast is, is mentioned in there, so. I'm just trying to find the section of it that they, that they talked.
We'll look, we'll look at it.
Okay, well, it's in there. And just so you know, just so the, so the board knows too, is that our, our plan is to, to live in this, is not just to subdivide it and sell it. We plan to live there.
One with the coops or the, or the barn?
The barn, we want to redo the barn into our home.
So Jamie, I have a question for you. Now, can we restrict, you know, through the deed on the Madison County property to insist or to make a covenant that it has to stay attached to this property in Pompey?
Not this board, but the ZBA could, could make that a condition. That, that would that that lot can't be built on, that it's part of this ZBA.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, it, it.
Because they have control of it, right?
Right, we gotta look beyond this applicant, you know, and what the future holds for the next owner of the property and what they might, or what they could do with it. And, you know, really turn it into a nonconforming situation.
Right, so, you know, ZBA is pretty, they're, they're, they're a tough board, right? They're, they don't just give out variances. So I think they'll ask all those hard questions.
I was a ZBA member for eight years, I know.
Good payback.
Yeah.
Well, I, I will tell you, it totally depends on, I, I think that you have quite a sophisticated ZBA as compared to some who I've never, never, they've never seen a variance they didn't like, so this is not one of those.
Well, this is my first, you know, county line or property on two, in two counties.
Yeah, at what point, Jamie, that we reach out to the town of Casanova in Madison County on, on this?
They don't really have anything to do with it, so we're gonna, you know, they're with, we, we would send out notice to them, but you know, they're, they're not, because they're within five hundred feet of the project, but.
Right, but still, they gotta be made aware.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, they'll be made aware of it in case they have any comments.
And, and they would have a voice in the environmental section as who the lead agency would be.
I am not sure that, I mean, this is an unlisted action, so I, I don't know if they're, they would have any standing in it.
Apparently, there's a similar type action on, on one of the, on the opposite corner that is years ago, there was a similar type situation. According to CAS is what they, what they had said. They basically were looking to see what Pompey was going, the Pompey's gonna do. Because like we said, there's not, you know, we don't, there are no plans to build anything up on, you know, those lots. So.
The, the CAS piece you're dividing though also, right?
Correct, yeah, just the way.
Squearing, kind of squeering off the lot, so to speak.
Correct.
So you, you have an application in with CAS for that division then?
Well, we did, but then we, we, we took it to them, but they said they weren't going to act on it until they saw what Pompey did.
Okay.
So what's done, and we combined all the lots, both gonna be over two acres.
Well, remember, we can't combine them, they can't.
I know, theoretically, though, both.
Theory, yes.
So, so my question at this point would be, since we're going to be, you know, wanting to look at this before the ZBA rules is, can you go over again what the major changes will be if you're granted all of these variances? What will we be looking at after you completed your, your?
Okay, well, what, what you'd be looking at is a restored barn that would be a single family residence. And it would be, if you're, if you're looking at the, at the drawing, that, that residence would be linear, linearly the same, but probably back from the property line, or back from that, back from the eastern line of the barn, probably, probably ten to fifteen feet, so it'd be more in the middle of the lot. And the whole idea there would be to put, you know, rebuild the barn and use all the materials that are in there. It's the, the inside of this barn is gorgeous, the, the, they've got the original timbers in it, and it's, it's a really, really nice piece of work. And we would, what we, our goal is to use absolutely as much of it as we can in, in reclaiming it and building this new house. We probably have, there'd probably be some sort of garage, you know, two car garage off of it. We haven't done any, we've still got, there, there's still a lot of hoops to go through on this, even, e- even after we get through these, through the variances and whatnot. So, but the, the point is well taken about what, you know, looking kind of down the road on that. And our, our plan would be not to, you know, this is the only thing we would be building. We're, we're looking for this variance to rebuild that barn.
What's your plan for the silo?
Oh, we want to keep it. We gotta fit, we've gotta, if anybody knows who's, who could fix the top, put another thing on the top of the silo, we're missing a, we're missing a piece, but that would stay, we, that, that's a really great fixture on the property.
And I think there's also already a driveway of some sorts to that barn?
There is, there is, there's access over on that side.
Yeah, the, the map should show where your driveways are.
Okay, we can do, we can definitely have that.
And probably we'd want to see septic and well.
Yeah, yes.
Will you, will you be adding a septic for the single family?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Steve, I know you.
Just to clarify, yeah, so is there a separate curb cut for the barn currently?
They're actually through, they're actually on the property that, as it exists now, there are three curb cuts. There's a, there's a curb cut in between the barn and the house. There's one to the house, and then there's another curb cut down that, that's, that's a little bit north of the, where the barn sits off of Pompey Hollow.
Okay, so Pompey Hollow Road's a county highway? They may want you to
Yes.
To reduce the number of curb cuts. Maybe to one.
We, we could, we could. For each lot, yeah.
But they would weigh in on that, so it's their jurisdiction.
You may have to get another, we, our, our, our vision would be is to do kind of a, what would be to use, utilize both of those curb cuts and have kind of a circular driveway in front of the barn. That's what we were thinking, but if they only want one access, we'll, we're, we'll oblige.
Where roughly is the current well and septic for the existing house?
It's, as you look at the house, it's in the back, that, in the, kind of the back southern corner. It's right, right off that, right off the corner of that. And it, it spreads out east to the, kind of the southeast.
That, that septic you're talking about?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, so in looking at the map, kind of the corner above the O and lot?
Yeah, maybe a little, maybe a little bit, little bit west of there, just kind of, actually, if you look, the, the, the corner of the L, or that, the, the bottom corner of that L is right where it is.
Okay, and where's the well?
The well is north of the house, probably ten to fifteen feet off of the property line, it's on the other side.
Okay, definitely, we'd like to see where the well is in relation to the line.
Not a problem. And I think Gary purposely drew that, made sure that there was enough space on that. I, I, we, we discussed that, that it was gonna be that it needed to be off of that, I was just looking at the number. No, we can, we can have that done.
Do you have any rough idea where you'd want to put it on lot one?
I would basically do that on the direction of what my contractor says. I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't want to tell you where I think it would, I have an idea where it probably will go, but I don't, I, I'm, I'm gonna go based off of his recommendations. But it certainly wouldn't be towards that house, I would imagine, especially if there's gonna be another septic. It would probably off to the, to, to the northwest of, of that lot. And probably the well would, if we have to, when we have a well dug, would probably be dug to the south of the barn. That way, the two, the, the leach fields would be on either side, essentially as far away from both of them as we, we can be.
Steve, did you have any other initial comments?
Um, just something we typically ask for is for them to show the topography on the subdivision plan. You mentioned the curb cuts. The well and the septic.
Yeah, just gotta get something to write with.
This is John. This is John Shaheen. On the survey map, then, it looks like on that barn, you're looking to more than double it in size.
Um, was that the old one that I drew? Um, was that the old one that I drew, that, that I just kind of drew to, to show where, there was, I originally just drew kind of a, a quick one to show where we thought it was gonna go. No, it's not gonna be, other than, other than what the garage adds to that, we, we do not want that any bigger than it is right now.
Okay, I'm looking at the survey map that was submitted with the subdivision application.
Okay, yes. When I, yeah, when I drew that, no, it's not, it is not gonna be bigger than, than the, than, than the, we, like I said, we want to try to reconstruct the barn in as much of the, its original form as possible. Again, with, you know, a garage off of it, but it's, it will not be bigger than that.
And the garage off of it would be to the east?
Um, it would be to, no, depending on, depending on how exactly, we said it's more, more than likely the garage would be, well, again, it's gonna depend on where the curb cut is. Where, you know, if we can only have one curb cut to the north, that, that, that may be in fact where the garage goes. If, 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 if they allow us to keep both of those curb cuts, I would imagine the garage would probably be to the south.
Looks like it's very tight to that property line between lot one and lot two, but.
Well, that's, that's, if they, if they, if they want us to do it, if they want us to do it on the other side, well, you know, we're gonna, if, depending on them allowing us to only have one curb cut, then we'll, that's what we'll do.
Hey, Jamie, I have a, a question. This is coming from a farmer that they're talking about setbacks on that lot one. And if they deconstruct the barn and then reconstruct it as their house, so the house has the setback. What about the silo? Because that technically is a fixed structure, and that stays there. Do they need a variance because that will remain, and that's obviously less than the 50 feet?
Yeah.
The, the structure need, both of the structures, when you go to ZBA, need that variance. So if this.
So we have to do them as it stands right now? We, basically, that's what we're applying for. Okay.
Right, right. But it, it should include the silo.
Okay.
Bob Rodriguez, anything to add?
Does Bob realize he's got him, mic on mute?
Yeah, my mouse died. Um, well, right now, I don't have anything.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll pass this one tidbit and, and surveyors that he's using, that the, the very first map that was submitted was done by Dave Ridenberg, who has since retired. And the new map, the one that Veronica has up for everybody to see, is done by Cottrell, and that's the most current map. Any other comments? Roy, did you have anything?
Um, yeah, just, I'm looking, I made some notes here. Are the frontages on both lots less than 200 feet? I know he said one was.
No.
Hmm. No. Sides, it was a side setback. He referred to it 195.
Yeah, I, I'm talking about on Pompey Hollow Road.
They're both 278. And 555. They're both over 200.
Oh, they are over 200. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's a very odd lot.
A little bit of history, it's an odd lot when they put redirected Route 20 through the middle of it. Cause the triangular, triangular.
Yeah.
Lots on the opposite side of 20 originally went with this farm.
Yeah.
The cow tunnel's still there.
Really?
There's a tunnel, the Bly family, the Bly family, who were the last family to own the property, were dairy farmers, and they, they had it, when they put Route 20 in, they built a tunnel underneath to shuffle the cows underneath the road.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you want to donate to us, we'd take it.
Yeah, you could use one.
Yep.
One, one last question I have, Richard, will there be any changes in signage or lighting with the B and B, or will that pretty much?
No, no, that's, no, not at all. No, no signs, no.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. Carl, did you have anything else? Making the rounds. Carl?
I, I don't have any other questions to ask, no.
Okay. Kevin, are you good now?
I am good. I think it's a beautiful piece of property, and I'm pleased with what you're doing with it. I drive by it all the time, and I just love the buildings and the way they're set up. It, it's a perfect place for a B and B. So I wish you luck with the ZBA.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a few more hoops to jump through.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Dan, anything else?
I'm all set. Nope.
Okay. John?
I'm good for now.
Okay. Um, I guess my questions and everything else, I think, has been answered. Jamie, are we, that we can set a public hearing?
I, I feel that we can set the public hearing. Richard, did you do your ZBA application? I can't remember.
Yeah, I did. It's, the, the ZBA submitted, and it, you know, I, I have to go, I've got to talk with the clerk about how, you know, the payment and whatnot, because apparently we gave him too much money or something. I've got to settle up with her that, but they do have, they've got the, the ZBA, the, it has the application. I just, after, after the meeting, if I can just check back with you, just so I'm clear on the, on the, the, the variances that I'm gonna be requesting, because I, I, I thought that I did it correctly, but I'm just, I, I want to double-check it.
And, and I do just want to make sure that you, that you're in touch with the, the clerk, so that it does get out and get published timely for a book. Okay. I wouldn't want there to be any.
Okay.
So, I, I just, I'm, I'm asking you to please, you know, be in touch with them to make sure.
I will. No, I will. I'll, I'll be in touch tomorrow just to make sure that what, what they have is what, what's required.
Yeah, I, I will try to remind them that when they do the public hearing notice, to send it to the adjoining municipality. And we've got some new people on board, so we're trying to catch all these things.
Okay.
But it's, but it's the notice of public hearing that gets sent to the municipality, so I'll have them do the, the ZBA notice as well as this notice. And the last thing, Sue, is whether this board wants to make any recommendation or comments to the ZBA. That's up to you.
Okay. Um, the other aspect also, Richard, when you're talking with the clerk, that you will need the list and addresses of all those neighbors within 1,000 feet to send the notice to.
Yep.
And like our last application, Jamie, he can do one notice covering both ZBA and/or.
He could. When's the next ZBA meeting?
September, um, I don't know what it is. It's, uh.
September 14th is the second Monday.
Yeah, it's the 14, September 14th and the 20th, and then, then you guys meet again on the 21st, so.
That would, that would be great if we could arrange that.
That would be very helpful.
One notice for both.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, as far as notice, advice to ZBA, um, I think besides everybody's liking what they're doing, just making sure that the, the setbacks are covered and, making sure that CAS is on board with that. Thought there was, let me, give me a second here.
I would also like to add that it's a small business in the town of Pompey, and we want to promote those type of businesses in the town. So I'd like that, something like that in there.
Okay, um, possibly, I guess, toss this out, do we recommend or require a perpetual easement from the town of Poppyland to the CAS land as a condition of the variance?
So, I, I think that that's a, you know, it's a, it's a possibility that they would want that and that we might recommend it.
Discussion.
I like the idea.
Could you repeat what you said there?
We could recommend or require for the ZBA's consideration with this, a perpetual easement from the town of Poppyland to the CAS land, make that as a condition of the variance.
Is there, is there a limitation on what would be covered in that? I mean, how do, specifically do we need to be in stating that?
I think we're just trying to encumber the Madison County property in perpetuity with this subdivision. So the ace as is.
So we couldn't go put another house on, on, on that. I, that, that's basically what it would prevent.
Oh, okay.
Right, and I, I have no, I have complete faith in you, Rick. It's just, you know, the next property owner somewhere tries to do something funny.
I like the idea of doing that. Honestly, as, as the owner, I'd, I, I want to keep that property, especially the way the, the way it sits now. I don't want anything built up on top of it.
So the easement is the best way to do that, is what you're, is what you're suggesting?
Is that in our purview, or is that the purview of the ZBA?
Say that again, Kevin?
It, the, the whole idea of this perpetuity thing, is that something that really is in the ZBA's responsibility? Or is that something that falls on us? I, I would think that's more of the ZBA's responsibility.
Yeah, correct.
Recommend, recommending.
Yeah, so we don't need to get so detailed in our recommendation, just we recommend it.
Yes.
Do something, okay.
They're looking at it and considering it, that, you know, it's been presented to us, and we realize that they need the variances, but we also recommend.
Yep.
And then we leave it on our table.
Yeah, I'd simply just like to see some kind of limitation on the development of those lots in Madison. So however, the best way is to do that, I'm fine with it, but.
I'm not sure we can make a recommendation for what happens in Madison County. That would be really Madison County's responsibility.
Well, we're gonna tie it to the deed, which is owned by the applicant.
And this.
And, and this property, but to make a, to make a statement to our ZBA that we want them to encumber Madison County property, I, I don't think we should mention that. I think that we should just say, we would like it not to be developed. That's our recommendation.
Voluntary thing, so.
Yeah.
Any further input on that, Jamie?
I, I think they're gonna thoroughly discuss it at ZBA, but the idea that we would do some kind of a recommendation about our concern or desires about it, I think is, is prudent.
Agreed.
Okay. Um, so the, is that a motion on that then? Jamie, you got to have a motion on that, a motion to have the public hearing?
Well, I think two things. Do you want to make a motion for a recommendation to the ZBA, what the words would be, and then a motion for the public hearing?
Yeah, that's, that's my thought, so.
Do we, do we need to do the public hearing first before we make the recommendation?
No, we're not doing a public hearing. We're recommending a public hearing.
No, for ourselves, we need to do a public hearing in September.
Right.
After they're done with their public hearing.
Right, but the motion tonight is to set the public hearing.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, okay, well, we'll start off with, I'd like to make a motion for September 21st, 2000, yeah, 2020, 7:00 PM is our meeting for the Town of Poppy Planning Board. Like to set a public hearing. Actually, Richard is, the name gonna be Spring Hill Farm, or is it?
It's actually, it's Spruce Hill Farm. S P R U C E, spruce.
Okay. All right, that's gonna be the name of the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Hearing of the Spruce Farm Two Lot Subdivision. Parcel number in Pompey is 024 dot dash 04 dash 05 dash 2 dot 2. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Did you get that down?
Who did the second?
Dan.
Dan, okay.
Okay. All in favor, will say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries the public hearing. And the second part of that, I guess I'll make a motion to recommend to the Town of Poppy Zoning Board of Appeals when they are considering the variances for the Spruce Hill Farm subdivision, that the Town of Poppy Planning Board has concerns with future possible development, and we would like recommend a perpetual easement of the parcels between Pompey and Town of Kip. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Kevin, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Hey, hey, I, you know, I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight. I, I just had a quick question for this. Or does any of this group know if there's any planned development directly across the street from this lot on Pompey Hollow? Has there been anything submitted for that?
Somebody, was it last year or the year before that wanted to build a brewery?
They, they moved to four and then went back to three because there was road frontage issues, and then we haven't heard a thing from them.
Cause somebody just started digging across the street and, and, and the back of the lot. I don't know what that was for, so.
Bob, do you know anything? Bob Rodriguez, you got to unmute. What's the other, on that property, whose storage unit is that that's sitting there?
You know, I don't know. I think that might be a, a DPW or something like that. I, I don't, I don't know whose that is.
That's, that's been sitting there for years since they restarted repaving Route 20 in that area.
Yeah, it's always been there.
Okay.
Are you talking about the south side of 20, where they, where they put the new driveway in?
Yeah, exactly. That, that's, yeah, I didn't know, I didn't know if they were planning, like, they took the driveway back down in the swamp, it almost looks like.
I, I have never been up there. They put a new driveway in there. Those lots are up for sale.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, there's, there's sale signs up there.
Okay.
We have any? We have any?
I think, um, are you? Are you talking about on the south side of me or on the west side of Pompey Hollow Road?
This is on the west side.
Oh, okay, I'm talking about the.
Right. And Bob, you were talking on the south side of 20, right?
Correct.
Yeah, there are a couple lots on the south side for sale.
I don't know of anybody building it or doing anything on the uh on the west side of.
Yeah, I.
They're doing something now. I we I saw, I was just by it last night.
Because I do know who owns that, but I don't know why they would be digging necessarily. They never came back and formally subdivided anything.
Okay.
I'll look at that tomorrow morning when I drive by there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, does anybody have anything else? And if not, is there? I hear a motion by Kevin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dan Bargavas second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed. I thank everybody for their time and efforts.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, thanks.
Good one, everyone.
Good one.